I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2018, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lord God, we ask that you give this board the wisdom to conduct the people's business tonight and throughout our tenure. Please allow us to be mindful that representative democracies demand the faith and support of the citizens being represented, and ours is the duty to protect those rights you have bestowed upon each of us. God, we ask that you allow those in pain to know comfort. We ask this of all who are hurting, including our fellow Commissioner and his family during this time of sorrow. We ask that you allow those first responders, soldiers, and most certainly the teachers to know strength as they carry out their most important work in protecting our families and educating our youth. And, Lord God, in light of recent events, we ask that you allow those who are lost to no purpose and spark within them the knowledge that they are never alone. In this, we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lightner, Commissioner Walz, Commissioner Rice, Commissioner Duckham, Commissioner Tompkins, Commissioner Mahoney, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Elwell, Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
Eight present.
There is entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. They're moved. I have a motion and support. Any additions or deletions? Vice Chairman Elwell.
Two amendments, Mr. Chairman. Under number four, communications petition would denote a comment section for the sheriff and under five A, consideration of resolution 02-18.9.
Any other additions or deletions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor of the agenda has its amended? Those opposed? Same sign? Duly carried. We've arrived at awards and recognition; there are none. We've arrived at communications and petitions. At this time, we would accept anything in writing from the audience. Please return it to the clerk at this time. You cannot speak to us; you just need to present it to the... Speak under public comment.
All right.
Okay? Do you need that back mark?
No.
Okay. Any other items to be received? Entertained a motion to receive. Will a motion and support? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? The same sign? Duly carried. Sheriff Rand.
Thank you for permitting me some time today, and Commissioner Rice, my condolences. First, I want to apologize to those I've hurt. As you are aware, I have made some statements that were clearly inappropriate. I am beyond embarrassed by those remarks, and I take full responsibility and ownership of those remarks. I've deeply embarrassed myself, my department, my family, and those who have supported me over these many years. Please know that these words, yet offensive words, and at no time indicated my actions. These words do not reflect what I feel in my heart, nor are they consistent with my beliefs. And despite my personal shortcomings, I ask that you continue to support the men and women of this department because they deserve better than what I have given them. I'm already taking steps to correct my failings. Again, I apologize to all I've hurt. Before I leave, I would beg the indulgence of the commission and ask that prior to my summary execution, we await the results of the ongoing investigation being conducted by the Michigan State Police and subsequent review by an outside prosecutor. Thus far, the only story that has been told is that of the plaintiff. I am at a disadvantage in that, at the advice of counsel, I've been advised not to comment on the allegations against me. For the past 25 years, I have served this office in this county with distinction. I am hoping that too is taken into consideration. Thank you.
At this time, special order item 5A, the resolution 02-18.9, Jackson County Board of Commissioners. I need a motion, please.
Mr. Board.
I have a motion by Rodney Walz, supported by Commissioner Rice. Mr. Walz.
The Jackson County Board of Commissioners, relation, resolution 02-18.9, whereas the Jackson County Board of Commissioners is committed to the spirit and the letter of civil rights laws, both state and federal, and has adopted the Jackson County policies that ensure that civil rights of all citizens and employees of the county are protected and, whereas, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners has annually, through its budgets, invested substantial resources in the training, dissemination, and education of policies with a goal of 100% compliance and participation by all officials and employees of the county. And whereas, Jackson County Board of Commissioners has a zero tolerance policy regarding conduct which violates or jeopardizes the civil rights of the citizens and employees of Jackson County. And whereas, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners has learned that Sheriff Rand has engaged in conduct which the Board of Commissioners deems to be an abuse of office of the county sheriff, and this conduct has jeopardized and diminished the public's confidence in Sheriff Rand. And whereas, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners does not possess legal authority over the elected office of sheriff, it does not have the ability to unilaterally remove the sheriff from office. Therefore, be it resolved, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners hereby officially condemns in the strongest way possible the erroneous conduct engaged in by the sheriff and unanimously calls upon the sheriff, Steve Rand, to restore confidence and integrity in our sheriff's department by placing the interest of the citizens of Jackson County above all else and voluntarily resign from the office of sheriff effective immediately. And therefore, be it further resolved, that the board chair is directed to send a letter on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners to request that the governor of the state of Michigan remove Sheriff Rand from office of sheriff.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightner?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We recognize that it was an eight-zero unanimous vote. At this time, we've now moved on to public comment. Public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their names and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open.
I'd like to commend the commissioners for their vote. I'd like to point out that if Sheriff Rand does not leave the sheriff's department, he leaves this community of citizens open to litigation any time a person or female incarcerated in the county jail, if there was a sexual assault or rape, any time there's an arrest of a black suspect or Hispanic suspect, it leaves the county open to the threat of litigation because there was definitive prejudice expressed by the sheriff. I do not believe the sheriff's department can go on under that situation, and I believe that it endangers our county and our county finances. It puts the public at risk of constant lawsuit should anything take place, even in the sheriff's department or at the jail. With regard to Sheriff Rand himself, I want to say there are people trying to paint him, you know, as an evil person. I don't agree with that painting. I think that the comments of the sheriff, other than the sexual snuff fantasy, are the type of comments you can routinely hear in this community, on the golf course, at the hardware store, at the bar. These comments express a deep-seated prejudice within this county that is not...
Please, please address your comments towards the board.
That is not exclusive to Sheriff Rand by any means, and I hope everyone will look inside their own hearts and look at their neighbors and see that this type of attitude, this type of Christian prejudice, this type of derogatory statements of others, be they racist comments, sexist comments, or homophobic comments, end in the county of Jackson. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Your name, please.
My name's Israel Gray. I'm a county resident and a city resident. And as long as we're on the Steve Rand situation, how about we go, um, I don't know if you guys heard about the investigation of Nikki Joen, about the fire she's the director LGBT community? As long as we're going to do that kind of stuff, then I guess that we're going to direct that the state of Michigan, the city of Jackson prosecutes her in her own house where she did it, waste taxpayers' money, waste the fire department's money, plus the police when it could have been to other calls. If we're going to play like this, what is the point of Steve Rand going away? If we got somebody that is LGBT, you know, whatever she is, why are we going to say Steve Rand away? She's going to set her own house on fire. They're the ones that are making the hatreds in Jackson County. Not us. Yes, you might have said those, but sometimes we fall into these hard times, you know? I'm pretty sure all of you deal with something, a hard time, or domestic abuse, or violence, or in between your family, or community members, or whatever it is. Please, try to give him some help here. How about we ask that he gets counseling this stuff before he does resign? You know, maybe sometimes counseling does help. I'm just saying, I think we're stepping too fast, even though that's what the statute states. If that's the case, then I guess everybody just needs to be retrained, need to go take classes. I mean, I'm just, it's just unbelievable. He's done an amazing job for the last 25 years, and just for one simple mistake, we're going to do this to him? I don't think you guys really had time to think about it before you guys even voted. You know, how long did somebody know about this, and then all of a sudden, boom, just You guys have been nice to me. I've been nice with you guys. There's no hate between us. I'm just saying, this is a public official, where he was elected by the community, which community has the right to remove him, not a board, not city council, not the governor. Well, I mean, the governor can, but he said he's going to stay out of it. So, I mean, let us do our job.
Thirty seconds.
Let us do our job. Sit back, relax, let us do our job. Thank you.
You didn't make this any taller, did you? Short of Janet Roachford Pleasant Lake, Henryetta Township. I had a big speech ready for you all tonight, but you did the right thing. This was going to be a terrible economic impact for Jackson County. I'm on the experienced Jackson board. We spend over a half a million dollars a year to promote Jackson County. This would have kept visitors and many other people away from our community, so thank you for what you did tonight.
Mr. Chair, my name's Mark Murech. I reside on Emmers Road, 2466 Emmers Road. I want to, want to send my condolences to Mr. Rice for his loss. Secondly, in the packet that I submitted to you, there is a very interesting story from the New York Times about gun control, the reason for all the mass shootings in the United States, and it really does come down to one thing, the ready availability of firearms like no place else in the world. I want to thank you very much for your vote and your confidence in Sheriff Rand. I think that his comments were appalling, completely objectionable, and I think that they disqualify him for service as sheriff of Jackson County. Along with yourself, and with the sense of the commissioners, I would hope that other citizens who feel that way would call the governor's office at this number here, 517-373-3400. His secretary may well answer, and if we were to say enough of us, we were to say we want Sheriff Rand removed, then the governor may well do that. The sheriff said that he misspoke, he had a few erroneous words. What words were those? Were they the N-word, the C-word, donkey perch, snuff films? Is this the person we want leading our police forces in Jackson County? I had the very unenviable task of explaining to my 91-year-old mother what a snuff film was. I don't believe that for most of our population, that is a frequently used word. We expect more from our elected officials and especially from our law enforcement. So, I want to thank you again for your vote on that, and I hope Sheriff Rand will reconsider and resign.
Del Anto, Clerk Lake. You know, I can't believe, I find this so hard to believe, that the county Board of Commissioners hasn't put the full wrath of their power behind Sheriff Steve Rand in defending him. There's not a person here in this room that hasn't, hasn't said the same kind of stuff, sure it's in poor taste, maybe it shouldn't have been said. I wasn't there, I don't know, I don't know the full contents of the, of the situation, but, you know, Steve Rand is about as honest and has more integrity than most people, obviously, or else he wouldn't have been on the job as long as he's been. You know? David Elwell, you're tied up out in Columbia Township. That offends me personally. My mother was a, was a full-blooded Chippewa Indian. How do you rate being called a chief? Now, that's a little ridiculous, right? So are the, so is the language that's being put out there by certain groups, by an elected city official that knows what it is to have a smear campaign against him and have his name drug through the mud. This, you know, it's ridiculous. This board should get behind Sheriff Steve Rand and 1,000%, thank you. You don't even have to say it, Steve.
Brenda Abbey, mother of a deputy. I do believe if it wasn't for, if Mr. Rand really cared about the safety and the wellness of his deputies and patrol people, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
I know you guys don't answer questions, but I bet you it's real easy to raise your hand if none of you have ever made an off-color remark about, say, anybody you work with, anybody that comes up here and stands and talks what's said in the back room? Are you all that pure? Are you all dumping on our sheriff? All of you dumping on our sheriff? And I know quite a few that shouldn't be dumping on our sheriff. You should be supporting. I'm absolutely embarrassed that you people are going to send that up there. If that's the case, let me point out several that should be removed from this council, this committee, this group of people. You guys aren't that special, but I bet you won't raise your hand because you know a second you raise your hand, you've just made yourself out to be a liar. Because I know a lot of you people, and I've been around a lot of you people after hours, and I know what's said. It's in private, and this is all over somebody wanting to get retirement because their ears are bad. Well, isn't that too bad for him? Maybe he shouldn't have played in a rock band. Thing about this is, is that you guys are jumping on this man who's been here for a long time, and I, I just can't believe, it boggles my mind. Sure, things are sad, but let's go down the line here, including the women. My wife said women talk 300 times worse than men do, so be careful, girl, if you could be on the edge here. People nowadays, it must be, if we want to get rid of you, we just say something bad about you, and all the morons jump in and follow you. Oh, they're all excited. We've got someone new to run over. Come on, you guys, this is our sheriff. We elected him, and I thought you guys would recognize that he is a... So, nobody wants to raise their hand, I see, to tell me that, say, none of you have ever made any off-color remarks, remarks about women or men. You don't even have to say anything, just go like that, and I'll know that you're a liar. Okay? How much have I got, Steve?
Thirty-seven.
Buy my resent, okay? Anyway, you guys did the wrong thing tonight. Thank you.
Rush Jennings, William only Township president, small business owner here in the city of Jackson. I wasn't going to say anything today. I was going to keep my mouth shut, but as some of you know, sometimes I can't do it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna rock some of the people here that have been supporters of mine for a long, long time. I commend the county commission for the recommendation of resignation of Sheriff Rand. It hurts me deeply that the sheriff that I respect a great amount has put us in this tough situation to make these decisions. I worked 10 years for the Michigan Department of Corrections many years ago, and I was a union vice president, believe it or not, and I had to deal with the warden, the deputy warden often, and a professional sitting in his office behind closed doors. And never once, and I, let me tell you, I've talked to some old-school correctional employees. At the bar, they talk like pirates. In the man cave, they talk like pirates. But in the professional setting, I never once heard those kind of words. And it stounds me that a person that I thought was a smart, educated, law enforcement professional, and I know how off-worlds professionals people are, I know how I talk when I'm with my buddies in the man cave, but in a professional setting, that cannot be accepted. And then, something that my supporters over here don't understand, if he doesn't resign, the community is going to come together with a recall effort, okay? And y'all know my political affiliations. Every one of you commissioners know my political affiliations. If you look at the big picture, and he resigns, we get to have an election with a Democratic picked sheriff and a Republican picked sheriff. If it goes to recall, it will be the stained image of Steve Rand against a Democratic picked party candidate. So, we're better off in the long run with a resignation, so when it comes time to elect a new official, a sheriff, we're head-to-head, and we're not our stained sheriff against their, whoever they pick would probably be a great pick. That's where I'm at with that. This is a sad day that we're all here having to talk about this, but thank you for your tough courage on that decision y'all made today.
I'm a firm supporter in our Constitution and in our rule of law, and that includes due process. I think you have cheated Steve Rand out of his due process. He hasn't been to court where he can face his accusers and, and reply to them and contradict them, and he hasn't been in a, gone through the due process where he can point out where things have been taken out of context. I think it's a shame to just take away from someone their due process. But this has been going on for 50 years that I have been watching. Lying liberals make accusations, false accusations, make up stories, and attack good people, and then just expect the good people to walk away. I hate that. I hope Steve fights us. Disappointed left already. I'd like to speak to him. I'm going to encourage him to stand and fight this. He deserves his day in court, just like any other citizen does. And to be run out because, because of innuendos and this tactic of the left to accuse people, they keep doing it because it keeps working. The good people just walk away. They take the high road, well, maybe me staying here hurts the public image. Okay, so the lying liberal lefties rely on that good nature of these people to continue walking away instead of demanding their due process in court. So, I'm disappointed. I haven't heard anything that has diminished my confidence in him until that will not happen, until he has his day in court when he's gone through the full due process, and he's been able to bring out his evidence. If you do this to him, when are you going to get the next honorable person that's willing to step up and say, "Okay, I'm a conservative, I'm a Republican, I'll run for this office"? Because all that's going to happen is the lying liberal lefties are going to accuse him of something, whether he did it or not, and everybody's going to expect him to just walk away. So, as long as you allow this tactic...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. As long as you allow this tactic of the left to continue, they're going to continue to destroy good people, and you're going to continue to have a challenge in finding good people to take these positions. Again, I believe in the Constitution, the rule of law, and due process. Steve deserves his due process.
My name is Corey Richardson. I'm a Jackson County resident. I just want to say thank you. Bottom line, just thank you. Right is right, wrong is wrong. At the end of the day, we all say things, you know, that we don't expect to actually others to hear, but the fact of the matter is, when you're in a leadership position, it's unacceptable. When you're within the county walls and you're facilitating a jail, you make these comments, unacceptable. Bottom line, I'm a board member with the Jackson Chamber of Commerce. I made these statements this morning. I'm glad that the chamber stepped up, made, you know, we made our statement today, and I just want to commend this board on doing the same. Thank you very much.
My name is Tony Phillips, Rise Township. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but my heart says I've got to say something. I spent 40 years in law enforcement. 1967 to 1993, I was with the Michigan State Police, retired as a captain. I was a second district commander in the Detroit area. I had 400 employees that worked for me. Upon retirement, I came to work for the Jackson County Sheriff's Department. Worked 13 years for there. I was hired as a captain and charged the road patrol, and I retired... I was hired as a captain and charged the road patrol, and I retired as the undersheriff. I know both Steve Rand quite well and the plaintiff of this matter. In fact, I recommended the sheriff, obviously liked that we hired a sheriff, or at that time, Steve Rand, back in 1993. And in 1998, I recommended the sheriff that we hired the plaintiff. Uh, obviously, I retired in 2006, so I haven't been at the sheriff's department for approximately 12 years, but I did work with Sheriff Rand for 13 years. He was a road patrol deputy, he served as a school liaison officer, he was a sergeant on the desk, he ran our dispatch center, and uh, he was emergency management coordinator. I had numerous discussions with Sheriff Rand in those 13 years, many of them in closed door, where if he wanted to say something improper, he certainly would have had the opportunity. Never once, never once did I hear a word that I felt was inappropriate from that man. Now, you could say, "Well, a lot has changed in 12 years." And, and that may be, I don't know, I'm not there, but I will tell you this, on a regular basis, and I say regular, maybe five, six times a year, we'd get together for coffee, I would stop in, he might come out to my house to say hello, nothing had changed. He still was the professional that I knew and enjoyed working with for 13 years. And I fired a few people in my day, don't get me wrong, and for some pretty serious things. My last official duty when I was a state police captain was recommending the termination of my post commander at a large post in Detroit here because he embezzled over $100,000 from forfeiture fees and different things. So, I know what's right and I know what's wrong, and I am quite disappointed that, I feel it was a knee-jerk reaction by the board tonight, they didn't give the man a chance to make things right, 'cause I know he would, given the opportunity.
Thirty seconds, Tony.
Thank you.
Mike Raskowski, Puzzling Lake, I too is not going to speak. I think the one thing that we can all agree on here is this, including Sheriff Rand, nobody can domes that language. There's a saying out there, you know, that mommy stays sticks and son may hurt your bones, words never hurt you. Here's the deal.
Mr. Raskowski, please address the board.
Well, I didn't address anybody, actually, technically.
No, sir, this is probably common to the board.
I will, okay?
Thank you, sir.
What's sad is, I'm a history buff. What's sad is, we gotta come together. One of the pillars of our society, and the miracle of America, is the presumption of innocence. Face your accuser, it's not one-sided. Now, the point is, it's not to say that Rand wasn't wrong, yeah, he was. How many times do you give criminals second chance? How many times do you give everybody a second chance? That's a real miracle, where you give everybody a second chance. If you go down this path of quick judgment, irony of the story is, is that the old John Wayne would be the sheriff holding back the mob, hanging. Quick judgment, till they had their point in court. Does that mean he's innocent? Probably not. Okay, you had some words. Offensive, yes. Offensive to me, yes. Offensive to some community members, yes. Let's look a little deeper. You are knee-jerking. Nazi Germany, nobody likes to bring it up, but you should be, it's very applicable to this board. And listen carefully. When a priest once said, "When they came for homosexuals, I said nothing. When they came for the mentally retarded, I said nothing. When they came for the lacy, I came and I said nothing. And when it came for me, I had nobody to say anything to." As much as I hate our awkward system, and I sit there and throw things at the screen because I see evil out there, as we saw in Florida, even he gets a time in court. The terrorists get a time in court. Do I like it? No, I don't. I'm furious with it, at hanging by the line of rail. But to sit there and have this quick judgment because it's politically correct is a dangerous route. And for those on the left that think this is cute...
Thirty seconds.
It is not, 'cause one day it could turn, and when it turns, it's gonna be ugly. It is no different than Mississippi burning, where they stacked the courts, the councils and what have you against a minority community. You must look that every human being, that's what's special about this place called the United States. Don't like it, but as they say, it's better to let 12 guilty go...
Mr. Raskowski, you've completed your time.
And have one innocent hang. Think about it.
I live here in Jackson. I really had no plan of talking, not at all, and I really have no personal view on the whole Mr. Rand thing, and Sarah will tell ya, I have a hard time keeping my mouth shut. You guys had a job to do, you did it, but as part of your job, and part of my job as a constituent, is to sit here, watch, see the proceeding go on. And the only thing I have to say is, half the time, I didn't even see full attention. These people are the people that you represent. You can't even give them full attention? I don't have a personal opinion about the whole thing, but I feel they deserve your full attention. That's all I gotta say.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment's now closed? I wait.
Doug Byswinger, Summit Township. Um, I don't, uh, have anything prepared, I just wanted to share an intelligent thought with you. Uh, this evening, um, I'll reintroduce myself, prior service U.S. Marine Sergeant Doug Byswinger. Um, there are things that happen in this world, and things are said in this world that none of us are proud of. Um, I know that everyone on the other side of that desk has said something or done something that they're not proud of. I'm here to get judged on my last day by my God. I think that...
Amen.
I think that to say that you throw your hands up in the air and, in my opinion, hide on the other side of that desk that you're sitting at is a disgrace to our county government, to the due process for Sheriff Rand. Um, and I guess I'm disappointed in all of you. Myself and as a former U.S. Marine, thank you.
Thank you, prior service. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment's now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 16th County Board of Commissioners. Have a motion in support? Any questions? Corrections? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any items for removal at this time? Thank you. The consent agenda's passed eight-zero. Arrived at standing committees. Standing committees, affairs and agency chaired by Vice Chair David Elwell, Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of appointments tonight. First up is the Board of Public Works, uh, two seats. The first is a public member. The applicants were Michael Way and Patrick O'Dowd, and the recommendation from committee was Michael Way.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor of Michael Way, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Next is the commissioner member appointment for the BPW as well. Dr. Alan Tompkins is the applicant and the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the Department on Aging Advisory Council, two seats, both public member. The first applicant was Dennis Peck, with a recommendation of Dennis Peck.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Second public member seat, Megan Kaiser was the applicant and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the Region Two Planning Commission. I note that, I believe there was a belief at committee that there were two open seats. It turns out there's one public member seat. Uh, I was not present at that meeting, but with a belief there were two seats, there were two recommendations made, uh, which were Lisa Gainer and Patrick O'Dowd, and again, this would be for one seat. Uh, I would make the nomination of both of them and request the clerk call the roll on it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Could you call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Rice?
Gainer.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Mahoney?
O'Dowd.
Commissioner Williams?
Gainer.
Commissioner Elwell?
O'Dowd.
Commissioner Lightner?
Gainer.
Commissioner Walls?
Gainer.
Chairman Shetwell?
O'Dowd.
For O'Dowd, Gainer.
Could you please recall the roll?
Commissioner Duckham?
O'Dowd.
Commissioner Mahoney?
O'Dowd.
Commissioner Williams?
Gainer.
Commissioner Elwell?
O'Dowd.
Commissioner Lightner?
Gainer.
Commissioner Walls?
Gainer.
Commissioner Rice?
You guys are glad I came. O'Dowd.
Chairman Shetwell?
O'Dowd. I have three.
Correct.
O'Dowd wins. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the Lifeways Board, one public member. John Clark is the applicant and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? All in favor of John Clark, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is the Substance Abuse, I'm sorry, the Substance Use Disorder Committee, one public member, Ed Woods, the applicant, and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last is the Land Bank Authority. There are two open seats, one nonprofit corporation representative and one real estate experience representative. There was one applicant for the real estate experience rep, being Angela Williams, who is also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Duly carried. Mr. Elwell.
Meaning the one will be held over till next month, Mr. Chair, for the Land Bank Authority, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Rice.
Mr. Chairman, Human Services has no business to come before the board tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
No business tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we've arrived at. Anything to be brought up by commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none. New business, Human Resources Command Officers Association of Michigan Road Patrol Sergeants Tentative Economic Agreement. We have a motion? We have a motion in support. Any questions to the motion? Could you post the roll? Passed eight-zero. Any other new business to be brought up by commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none, we've arrived at the opportunity for public comment. This is the second round of public comment. Each individual will state their name. You have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity, it may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Second round of public comment.
Now that you guys, my name's Israel Gregg. Now that you guys heard everybody put their opinions out there, I hope you guys will go back into a closing session meeting, and we talk the situation with Steve Rand, and we do your votes for an emergency meeting. Second of all, the defense attorney was here today for the other party. He's got that all on tape, too, just letting you know. And have you guys ever thought of, you know, Mr. Schutey maybe just doing this just to, you know, it's true, obviously, he recorded that, he admitted to it, but he's the one that's gonna run next to be our sheriff. How, since he had to be paid administratively because he's ill from the situation, how do we know that he's gonna carry our citizens and his fellow officers? How do we know he's gonna be able to do the job? Think about that. He's gonna run for it regardless. So, I'm just saying, will we please think about it? I've known the Schutes for a very long time, and Mr. Steve Rand. They actually live out in the Hanover area. That's where the family originally was from. You know? I just...
Thirty seconds.
Wanted to say sorry about me being upset earlier with the vote that you guys did. Sometimes you do have to do what you gotta do, but please give us time in court. I mean, you would want your time in court, you would want your time in court, you would want your time in court, all of you guys would. So would I. If I was Mr. Rand, I would ask you to give him that time in court. Please, go back in executive session behind closed doors and we talk about it.
Any other public comment?
Hi. Hi, um, I know you all know me, my name's Val Cochran Toops. I live in Leonie Township. Uh, I've been on the Human Relations Commission as an ex-official and now as a commissioner for about 14 years, they tell me. So, I've been sitting and watching the different things that have been going on in the city for a long time, and the county, from a real good position to hear a lot of the sentiments from people in the community. And right now, we have been working so very hard to try to repair a lot of the problems we have in Jackson as far as race relations, uh, yeah, the, the loss of respect for our law enforcement. I'm a very pro-law enforcement person, and I believe that law enforcement is the, 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 the very, very basic start of interactions between our community and, and other things, like government, uh, the court system, uh, social service systems, just, it, they're, they're a starting point for a lot of different things, is that contact that's made. We have, in my heart, 'cause I, you know, doing children's programs to help kids understand that police officers are our friends, it just, it just tears my heart up to know that all the work that we've been doing and I've been doing has been being undermined by someone. Just, it really just breaks my heart.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, thank you for the thirty seconds, but... But I don't think that by keeping this gentleman in his position or allowing him to stay is gonna help us continue to make good strides forward. I think he's broken our trust. And as, and as a woman, I, I'm terribly hurt that I've sat next to him in meetings and to wonder what in the world was he thinking about me? And what in the world behind closed doors was he saying about me? I just, it just hurts me. Thank you.
Again, raise your hands. Nobody will do it. Why don't you guys sit down and talk over what you did tonight? Cause you all know deep down inside your heart, you know you're wrong. Cause a lot of times people do things and they get let go. A lot of people do. Looking up here at this board, a lot of you people should be raising your hand. Okay? He's a good guy. I don't see how your economics is gonna be ruined or they're gonna do, oh, let's not move to Jackson. They got a sheriff that says bad things behind closed doors. Well, there goes another million dollars out the door, right? You know, it ain't gonna happen. How many people really care except the people that care about Steve Rand? Apparently, you guys don't care about Steve Rand for what you did tonight, which is just really embarrassing. I don't care what the man said behind closed doors. I don't care what name he calls anybody, cause I call you all names that I'm sure you wouldn't like to hear. But that's just me. That's the way I am and I don't care. And Steve Rand ought to not care about any of you guys after this. Because we elected him. We wanna keep him. Plain and simple. Just like we keep electing you people? It must be a reason, right? He does a good job, you guys do a good job. But to turn on your own-
Thirty seconds.
I'm gonna go ahead and let you have it, Steve. Thank you anyway.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Tony Bear. Uh, we elected Sheriff Rand. We, the citizens of Jackson County, uh, elected Sheriff Rand at a open election. Every candidate was able to state their positions and the citizens decided who they had the most faith in. So now one thing that I'm questioning is if, uh, if Officer Schuie is gonna run for this position, what better way to, uh, what better motivation for him than to rather than face Steve Rand in an honest, open reelection, present your strong points to the citizens and see what the citizens have to say? Seems to me, uh, there's a great motivation to take the cowardly, backstabbing approach that what it appears to me has been taken to eliminate Steve Rand this way. And then he's gonna run to replace him? Uh, I don't know all the information. I'll wait to hear more information, see what other information comes out. But what I know right now, uh, doesn't appear he has any integrity, enough integrity that I'd ever vote for him.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Peter Bormuth. I'd like to point out that, um, I don't know what was about a year back, I told Commissioner Mahoney of a incident where an off-duty deputy of the Sheriff's Department said that every time he sees a load of coal out by J.C. in Summit Township, he pulls them over. So a load of coal would be a carload of the young black students who are attending Jackson College. And so there's also been in the past racial profiling, at least by a single deputy, I can't claim anything more than that. Um, as I said before, this incident is not isolated to Sheriff Rand and he is not a demon. Um, this incident is proven by the people who come up here and speak is part and parcel of Jackson County. I wanted to address one thing of Israel Gray's said, um, I believe the state police have submitted an investigation to Jerry Zarzinka's, the county prosecutor's office. And I believe it has to do um, with Mickey Jolie. And I'd like to see the prosecutor take whatever action is appropriate on that report. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Casey Zantz and I am a Jackson County resident. Um, I just wanna make a quick, um, statement. As a mother of young children, there's enough hatred, racism in this world that I really am not comfortable raising my kids with it, um, in their backyard by somebody that we've elected as a trusted official to protect and sort our county. So I commend you on your decision in calling for his recognition, resignation. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed? Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Chairman. So I've been sitting here the last, um, the last about ten minutes, uh, actively listening, but silently praying for the, the right words to say right now. It's been eight days since this hit the news. I've had a migraine for eight days. It's very, very unlike me. And you can ask anyone around me to hold my tongue. Especially when something needs to be said. And for eight days, something's needed to be said. So I for one, wanna apologize to my constituents, to the county for what I would call our, um, delay in presenting what was presented tonight. But I do wanna say this. What we did was make a statement in what we believe should happen as a board on behalf of the community. That doesn't mean it happened for anybody who's mistaken that we've said that we, he has to resign. He doesn't have to. We've only made a recommendation that he does. So there's still work to be done. For the last, I don't know, over a year since the Ferguson incident happened, a group of individuals in the county of Jackson have been working to build a stronger Jackson, a stronger community between the individuals who live in the community and law enforcement. What's happened and what's been said, in my opinion, that's destroyed every effort that we've made over the last year. Now, let's make this clear also. The lawsuit is completely separate than the statements our sheriff decided to make. It's completely separate. I don't care what reason the individual who happened to capture those moments had to capture those moments or what their intentions were. But his sentiments, his feelings, the way he feels is okay to conduct himself not in a private setting. This was not a private setting. This was not behind the closed doors in his main cave. This was not a conversation between friends. This was a sheriff speaking to his staff. Okay? There's not allegations, there's recordings that what he said is what he said. And then he just stood here in front of us and said that what he said is what he said, but he's sorry. In my opinion, you can't fix that. In my opinion, you can't go back on that. We can accept an apology, but we can't move forward from that. We can forgive you, but you cannot continue in a position with feelings and sentiments like that. I've always been told in every job that I've had, attitude reflects leadership. So if this is the attitude and the sentiments of the leadership and everyone in the room while these statements were being made, we're laughing and thought it was funny as well, there you go.
But that's my opinion.
Attitude reflects leadership. There's a big difference between somebody having a smear campaign put out against them and someone being flat out busted for what they said. I don't think you can compare the two or even put them in the same conversation. It's a big difference. A smear campaign is when they make something up about you that's not true. Or they stretch the truth. That's not what happened in this situation. I don't know if you've heard it. If you haven't, it's on YouTube. You can YouTube it. So you can hear it for yourself if you haven't heard it yet. Someone mentioned due process. Um, and that what he was, what, what he said was, was taken out of context. But I don't, I don't know how you can take out of context that you wish that you could still step on the necks of blacks like you used to do. How do you take that out of context? In my opinion, the question is, how far is too far? I think we've seen that today. I think that the comments that were made have gone too far. And quite frankly, probably for too long. Because it didn't sound like this was a new conversation. It wasn't an isolated incident. This is something that has happened over time and to me, that's not right. I mean, I just don't know what else to say. Um, I'm, 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 again, I'm gonna end this with the same sentiments that I ended our, our last meeting on. Uh, I love everybody who I sit next to. Um, because I think that all of us know and understand that we're not here to serve ourselves. We're not here to voice what our personal opinions are. We're not here to stand up for what we personally believe. We're here to stand up for what's right for the whole of Jackson County. So I won't take too much time going on, but I do hope that our sheriff decides on his own to do the right thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahoney. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion? We have support. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried.